Also very much for joining us this evening. The time is 7:04 and I'd like to officially call it a quarter. Roll call please. Nelson?
Here.
Blackman?
Here.
Caritas?
Here.
Here and the forum is present. We are going to move things a little bit out of order on the agenda so that we can get to one of our most exciting parts, which is all of our student recognition. We're gonna do that first.
Like welcome, a principal at Flossom Hills Elementary School, Mrs. Haley Martin.
Okay, meeting school board and everyone. Flossom Hills is very excited tonight to honor our reading specialist team. We have some pictures up here, but these ladies continuously promote a level of literacy at Flossom Hills. They have organized community readers days where they have the mayors, the firemen, the policemen, the school board members, district office, HF students come in and read to them and talk to them about how important reading is. They talk about reading ads, magazines, online forums, how-tos. Their reading's everywhere in life. They have organized family nights, One School, One Story, where we all read one book and every student gets a book donated by our PTO. And they do activities around it and just make it exciting and fun for the students. And recently, I was in a classroom last week and there were fifth grade boys coming in and one of them had this whole lesson around football. And the boys were so excited to come learn about it, they actually wore football jerseys because they were so excited for this reading lesson. And she called them MVPs and then when I walked in, she's like, "The scouts here." And they were so into it. Their faces were lit up, they just wanted to keep reading about it. The students literally skipped down the hallway to their reading groups. They honestly love reading and it's just so heartwarming. And so I just hope that we're instilling a love of reading in these students that they will take on forever because it's so important. And we could not do it without these ladies. They're phenomenal, they're a dream team and we are so lucky to have them. So, please come up. Ms. Evita McNeil. Ms. Michelle Gerros. And Ms. Sarah Rusk. Thank you.
Next, like welcome Dr. D.
Serena Campbell. So we want to take this opportunity to introduce to you, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you, Mrs. Selski and Mr. Evans. Their amazing classroom community. Team Ski, as they're known, has really taken the opportunity to build a classroom community this year. They understand the importance of sharing their commonalities and differences while certainly achieving and doing the hard work to obtain their goals. So, instead of me talking, we've kind of given you a view of what their daily life's about, so we're gonna show you a little clip of that.
So the first day they walk through the door, they become Team Ski members and they will be Team Ski members for life. What I love most about this year is just the relationships that I think being built between them, the way they talk to each other, the way they support each other and encourage each other and just their interaction together. It's just, it's awesome to see. The kids that are building relationships right now, they're going to impact their lives forever. And I tell them all the time, like, "Once a Team Ski member, always a Team Ski member." It's awesome.
What makes Team Ski so good is that we're always working as a team. We have integrity, courage, compassion, citizenship, and courage.
Well, it's different because we have high expectations.
How we work as a community and we're a great team. We follow our expectations.
We don't judge people by their cover, like, we just, we, we, we just people by their party.
We always work together by like helping each other, doing some stuff.
We try our best and we stay on task.
In the classroom, we encourage each other. We, we tell some people, "You got this," or like when we help, like, or test, we can be told, "You got this."
When our ship sinks, we bring the backup guys. All the people work together.
If their day's like bad and they need some positive energy, giving them a high five might just give them the positive energy that they need.
I think Team Ski deserves this because we work hard as a team and we never give up.
Why we're here is because we work hard and we get the job done.
We're helpful and we support our teammates.
And we don't laugh at each other, so mistakes help us more.
There's a great girl, Ms. Gil, from Mississippi. She has a track down, college, and intensive. I think she's a fan of, of high school and high school college, she's a track girl. She's a great, wonderful student.
I love Ms. Adams because she helps me with how work and is nice.
He always helps me out and if you need help with something, he deserves a hand.
He helps you with, I love Ms. Adams because he's like always lets you through a rough times.
What makes Team Ski feel so great because we got the best teacher and we always help each other.
She has all the favorite things that I like, like pizza, ice cream.
But I think about Ms. Ski, that she's very funny, she always tries to be nice, even though moments that people are not following your actions.
Team Ski is the best teacher and like she's fun and sweet.
Because she helps us learn and I love school, so Ms. Ski, I really like her and she's a nice teacher and she's respectful and she always say that she got our back.
We love you, Team Ski.
One, two, three, Team Ski.
Okay, we're going to go for some of 162, one's finest, right here. Team Ski, you are the classroom community of the trimester. Give yourselves a hand.
All right, I don't know if everybody's here, but I am going to call everybody's names. When I call your name, come up and practice your formal handshake. First Team Ski member, Maya Davis.
That's right. That's how I say thanks.
Miguel Camarena. Jose Sariano. Riley Wolfo. Zemir Walker. Kaitlyn Glisstra. Molly Preston. Debbie Moma. Adam Miranda. Christian McKee. Isabella Marcial. Robert Jordan. Isabel Rivera. Donald Jones.
Oh, there you go.
Melanie Forza. Dominic Fernandez. Shy, everybody looks.
Yeah, right. This is, this is different.
Mia Graziano. Ray Galvin. Anthony Elung. Jeremiah Echols. And Salvador Barrio. And Christopher Vakina.
Team Ski?
Ready? Two, three, one more, one, two, three.
Hi, Shannon.
I'd like to say a word to the board and ready, I'd like to express my gratefulness and gratitude, not only to Ms. Ski and Mr. Adams, but Dr. D, I'm feeling that at the primary school. And I know it's not, it's a difficult goal, but really we have to remember, and I think I can speak for our parents, that we're, we are growing and raising adults, not just children, we're raising adults for the future. And I think that's what our goal at every school district is, but consider, or specifically in this situation, Ms. Ski is really driving home how we need to raise these kids as adults and to function in community. That's grateful to me, because these kids are just the family. To see these kids from kindergarten and now in fourth grade working together, it's like, I would want to bring me to tears. So, just from the bottom of my heart, and I think we're for having an amazing principal who's brought everything together, that's, that's a real.
Just adjourn after that. Anything that we can do to top, to top that, no, no, thank you. Thank you also very much. This is, this is why we're all here, is to experience these types of moments. Thank you much, but. I'm sorry. I'm gonna hold that, but it warms our heart beyond, our hearts beyond belief. And this is actually why we are all up here every other Monday and sometimes Tuesdays and all the work that we do in between those meeting days and meetings. So thank you very much, teachers and principals for sharing this with us. Bring more of this. Make the music a little more lively so I won't. But bring more of this, this is what it's all about, so thank you very much. Okay, how did I do for all? Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be my kids, it could be anybody's kids, don't do this to me, so thank you. Okay, so we've done roll calls and, okay, I need to open the floor to public truth attempt. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, we actually will now enter into our regular board agenda, so if parents actually want to exit, they may decide, although if you have more than that, you're not going to stop at that. I know.
My, a plug, a plug.
For the camera.
That's where we're going. We are gonna be checking.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Fran, since I didn't use you prepared. Okay. We will now continue with our agenda. The board would like to open the floor for a public hearing and take any questions regarding the levy from the public. The board, they closed public hearing and the board may adopt the 2018 levy during the action highest portion of the agenda. So at this time, I'd like to open up the floor to the public. Any questions regarding the levy?
Open it, roll call.
Oh, I need to officially open it, so I need a roll call. Nelson?
Here.
Blackman?
Here.
Huckabee?
Here.
Simmons? You need the nomination. Okay. Caritas?
Here.
Caritas?
Here and yes.
Forth? Yes. And the forum is present. Okay, now I'd like to officially open the floor to the public to discuss any comments or questions that you may have about the fiscal year 2018 levy.
So just as a brief caption, we are putting on CPF and it has two lines of newspaper, the box, Friday, November 30th, it was in South Town. And there's some property in there. So the second piece of this then is the second item beyond that property tax levy would be to apply to where the property tax would be. So then if we happen to get that grant, if the money goes far enough down the list, then we'll be, in the end of the year, probably bring some spare work. And then there'll be technical terms that we can go over. Are there any comments or comments on over this and over this? So, any comments, and then you can close the floor and then we'll just take a summary of it.
Okay. And to be clear, the way you just presented is your recommendation to the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any questions from the audience? Any more questions? Okay. And I have motion to adjourn the truth and taxation hearing. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, we are, we've officially closed the truth and taxation hearing portion of our agenda. We will return to our regular, our regular set of agenda items. The first item on the agenda are audience comments. We do not have any audience members, then we sign off.
Uh, Dr. Graham, a community resident. Thank you very much for listening to me last session, I'm not gonna be as long this session. Uh, just to report to Dana and Jamie have set up a meeting for this coming Friday at the library. I've asked Anna, who heads up our youth services program, David, who heads up the adult services, both of them hopefully will be there to join in the, in the discussion. Uh, the other thing, I talked to Jerry and Von, this is months ago now, but both of them said that they would, if we need some help, send over the National Honor Society Kids. The one thing that we don't have, which I suggest maybe a little discussion, is we don't know where the kids are. We don't know if they're sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders. We don't know if any of these kids need a little help here, don't need a little help there. And so, Jamie is gonna be looking for direction and if it's a matter of staffing, uh, we've got some money that we can attribute to that or allocate to that. So, good luck in your meeting and whatever we can do, we're, we're right with you to help. Uh, the second thing goes to the articles that appeared recently in the Chronicle. And, um, I was very pleased because it laid everything out, dates, et cetera, what we've been achieving. But if you looked at the HF article, and they had a few pieces of tough news in that article, but at the end of the HF article, they came in with a lot of, four or five bullets that were very positive. We're doing this, we're doing this, we're doing the other thing. I didn't see those type of positive things in the article that was with, uh, focused on 161. All you had to do was put up a picture of what we saw tonight, brought tears to your eyes and the community, I think, would feel very, very strongly, positively, that great things are happening. But I brought some of the stuff that, um, Jody Bryant gave me, their cheat sheets of all the stuff. So, you know, if you give it to the Chronicle, the Chronicle is balanced, but they're in our corner. And so we can share some of the good things at the end of the article, wherever, so that we're not getting whacked, whacked around all the time, so.
To your point, Mr. Graham, that we've aggressively shared stories with the Chronicle about wonderful things happening in our classrooms.
Yeah.
And we haven't had as much luck as we would like. I mean, even not to share in actual stories here with it. So, you know, we do, you're working with our, the staff rapport, working with Mr. Trump, Mr. Williams, so that we can get additional coverage on the great things that are happening. But I really appreciate you bringing the additional items. We're also working on those with our communications manager, Amy Kent, so that we have, you know, the one page views of the tri-holes by our different programs, we can share with the Chamber of Commerce, with our wheelers, with all the people who are out there spreading the great word about Flossom and the school requests.
Uh, last point, tomorrow night at the library, there's gonna be a group called Flossom Forward, and tomorrow night at seven until, I don't know, eight-thirty, plus or minus, uh, they're gonna be talking about schools. And I can't go because we're having a library meeting at the same time, but I think it's in the basement of the library, so that may be, thanks again for all of your hard work, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, superintendent of the board.
Well, we had a wonderful weekend, it was great at the Flossom, really happy to report that the Winter Fest, Tree Memorial Lighting went awful down the hedge, chilling, but spoke with a number of Pappy's students and parents and if you're on our Facebook page, you've got to see myself with Santa Claus, so that made my weekend complete and it was just a really good time out in the community. It is concert season, as you know, we have a fifth and sixth grade jazz band concert tomorrow, tomorrow evening at six o'clock at Parker Junior High, that's followed up by our Fall Orchestra Concert, which is on Thursday, September 13th at six-thirty. And it's also at Parker, really looking forward to seeing our talented students, they've done all the practice, hard work and dedication. As Mr. Graham had mentioned, I have a meeting with me director of the Flossom Public Library, Jamie Paisley, this Friday to talk about the progress that we've made over the last several months, but also to review the next steps. You've made great strides, but by no means are we finished. Uh, we have to move forward together. We're going to move forward effectively and I've heard nothing but positive comments about her as a person, but also as a professional, so really looking forward to meeting her. And I'll have an update on that meeting and our next steps at our next committee of the whole in January. Can I say a word?
Any questions or comments? January seemed like a long time.
It seems like a long. It is here.
Next item. We have two items that are listed under our consent agenda. I moved that we adopt one of the items, the first one, the amendments of the Board of Education Meeting, November 13, 2018, Executive Session Meeting, November 13, 2018, and Committee of the Whole, November 26, 2018, and employee reports. Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Okay, Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
I'm staying.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Caritas?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Forth? Yes, and the motion passed. Next item on the agenda, committee reports.
We have a committee engagement committee meeting next Tuesday. We have our scope survey results, Amy Kent and I spent about an hour fifteen minutes with the company going through our survey results. Um, I don't think that there are any major surprises, but I walked away with some insights on how our parents in the district receive our communication, how our community members without children perceive how we communicate during a crisis about the tax levy, about all these different pieces, and then how our staff members feel about it. So, we have some really good information that we can take moving forward. When we meet on the 18th, we'll review all of that data, but we'll also talk about our initial steps on addressing one major communication slice for us, which will be website, app development, those sorts of things. The team will talk about what that looks like, it will come to the board for discussion in January, and then from there we'll work on our communication plan based on the sculpture that results in all of that, we're alone directly through the board.
What time is that meeting?
About 6:00 PM here at Room 21.
Any questions or comments about the committee engagement committee report? The only item under reports, so we have, um, a number of discussion items. So we have a number of discussion items. The first discussion item, 2018 investment report. I respond very well to music. Music with your investment report.
Actually, I'd share a good point. I'm trying to order me to someone play the song, the public comments on our lecture board.
Is that a whole genre of like, we're meeting that song? I'll look it up, Steve.
I'll start another time. But anyway, thank you for having me tonight. My name's Rock Rosi. I've been a treasurer for the school district for a lot of years, ten more years. I actually was a graduate of Srinell, so that's the best school that you award. Flosmore Elementary School District 161 is part of an investment school, 18 School Districts in Illinois. For the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, the pool realized its total returns of $6,337,000, with an average monthly pool size of $436,000,000. As of June 30, 2018, there were approximately 300 different investments in the pool. The average monthly yield on the pool's investments is 1.83%. When adding the money market accounts for liquidity purposes, the total cash basis rate of return was 1.46% for the fiscal year. The rates were, and so here, the rates went up during the fiscal year, they started off lower, ended up higher, but on average, that was the rate of return. During the fiscal year, Flosmore 161 realized $553,000 of interest earnings to the pool, with an average fund balance of $36,520,000. This compares to $475,000 acres received in fiscal year 2017. As of June 30, 2018, Flosmore 161 represents approximately 844% of the total investment pool. If you turn to page three on the investment report, this is the interest rates movements during the fiscal year, and as we're toward April. This graph in the middle is the Fed funds rate since 2000, and you can, 2005, excuse me. And you can see that from 2009 until about two years ago, two and a half years ago, the Fed funds rate was almost zero, that the rate is always quoted on the news. So our rate of return of the basics at all school districts in Illinois. But you can see that over the past few years, interest rates have gone up. And in December 2017, it bumped up to the 70 times in a couple of years. And as of fiscal year, at 2%, or three times, at one quarter percent every time. That Fed funds rate is the biggest thing that drives the rate of return on our investments. We're not allowed to invest in things like stocks and commodities and things like that. We're limited to the Annual Public Fund Act, which is governments, government agencies, CDs, bank notes, municipal bonds, things of that sort. So that's kind of how it tracks what's going on with your, with the pool. And you can see as the year went on, just as the Fed funds rate went up, the rate of return on our investments went up. So at the beginning of the year, money market funds were maybe only around 1%, the end of the year, closer to 2%. But that's actually money for the school district. If you turn to page four, one following. I think it printed on the I, let's see. Maybe there's two sides to it. Anyway, the point, page four is the yield curve, which shows how the difference in interest rates from early in the, like a three-month investment of government agencies or government treasuries versus third years, and whether there's a big value of investing farther out in maturity. And the point that the graph showed was that during the year, our most short-term rates went up significantly, while long-term rates did not. So as of today, for example, the short-term, well, as November 21st, 2018, a three-month United States Treasury note earned about 2.5%. And a 30-year United States Treasury note earned about 3.15%. So there's not much of a difference. So in terms of a rate of return, there's not a significant incentive at this point in time to invest school district money farther out in the yield curve. Over the past year, as I mentioned, we had an interest rate environment that has been defined by two primary characteristics, rising interest rates and low value and extended duration of the portfolio. As I get into investment decisions, as I mentioned before, the types of investments are very limited, but most of our investments are to match cash flow. So we get money from the county treasurer, Mark, and the office. And we get money from, we service Eastmore School District that's King County, they get their money in June. But the most expenses for school districts are in June, and they do the teacher rounds, they pay the teachers for the summer. And then on December 1st, school districts have bottom line payments. We have like $30 million to do that. So the money comes in from the state, from our government taxes, and we invest the money in that maturity, just to make sure that the money is liquid, so that pay checks and accounts pay off, be paid, and the checks be created. So that's most of the investment. Those are most of the investment decisions. But there are, there's always money to be invested slightly beyond that. So if you turn to page eight, which is the I number, so I'm guessing, oh, it's with the, it's a better picture. So page eight, this is the breakdown of the portfolio as of June 30th in terms of maturity. And you can see that about 15% of the portfolio, and this doesn't include the money market, was in maturity within zero or seven days, where you see a whole breakdown. But between zero and seven days and 360 days, you could see all the maturities. And then if you plotted it out of the graph, you could see that I don't have a lot of investments coming to in August, because August tax money comes in, for example. So knowing that the money comes in, generally knowing when the money goes out, it allows us to take advantage of it, my yield curve if it's going up, and make decisions that are better investments. And then if you turn to the following page of the bio, this is the composition of the investments of the portfolio. And as of June 30, 2018, 1.4% of the portfolio was in liquid assets, which is money market accounts. 13% was municipal bonds. 20% were banking corporate notes. 44% were certificates and deposits. And 9% were in public and government agencies. And then within the certificates and deposits, I don't have a number, but somewhere between, I believe, 60 and 70 banks throughout the country, your money's invested in it as a part of it. We're allowed to invest $250,000 per school district in a CD and is fully insured under FDIC coverage. So we can invest 18 times toward $2,000. We could roughly put in $4 million of investments in different banks and still be covered under FDIC insurance. So we diversify that perspective as well. Going forward, I expect interest rates to continue to rise slightly. They did raise by, rise by another quarter of a percent. The Fed funds rate in September, it's fully anticipated that it's going to rise again by a quarter percent in December. But as of recently, the consensus now is that the Fed funds will not raise interest rates again in 2019. There's still, there's like a 40% chance it's going to happen in April, but a lot of economists are thinking that after the December increase, interest rates are going to level off. There's some concern that the economy is stabilizing and not growing as it has been. And there's some concern that raising interest rates can be less of an incentive for people to borrow money, keep the economy going. So certainly, the president is pushing the Federal Reserve really hard to keep rates level. And at least the economists right now, as of today, are thinking that that makes stable, that might stabilize. So we're going to keep an eye on that. We're going to keep an eye on, you know, the different investments and looking where there's value in the market. And continue to do what we can to serve you and helping us with any way we can possible, the resources we need to do what we need to do. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
All right, I got to tell you this. The back is a true story. Paul Parker report.
I helped him out a little bit. And I went to the board meeting, somebody went to the, to the podium, and it's a very involved community. And this, this woman, they gave off of her iPad, and she goes, I'd like to play a song. And she plays Doobie Brothers. She goes, I can play Doobie Brothers song right now. I like Doobie Brothers. And everyone's complaining, so I'm just going to get some music. But she plays What a Fool Will Be. And she doesn't play just one verse, she played like three or four verses. And she gets the, this is honest truth, this is public session. And I was getting ready to speak right afterwards, and she goes, it was wonderful, lute, please. And the song ends, I'm like, where's she going? She goes, this is the song I think about whenever Dr. Rosey talks. So I thought, okay, that's going to be my entrance. But I appreciate you thinking much of this stuff as well.
Who remembers that? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Next item on the agenda, Discussion of Every Student Succeeds Act. ACT as a discussion.
Sure, well, going specifically, some more specific than the past, I'll maybe turn over to Alan Olaf. But really, you need to get looking at our partners through this process. The team at Parker has worked on quality framework, and they have our school leadership team session today as they're working through their rubric, looking at all the different practices in the building. That information will come to the board. We can target the cow in January, so we'll get a few cracks at it before everything is due at the end of February. But part of this process is to select a learning partner through Illinois Power. These are vetted volunteers who offer consultant work assistance, et cetera. And, you know, turn around, I'll let you take it.
Yes, so the CEC, the Consortium for Educational Change, we have a longstanding relationship with the CEC. They've worked with us in the past on our curriculum options, as well as our training with setting goals and developing full improvement initiatives past. The CEC is an Illinois Power partner, and we take Parker's school leadership team through the individual pathway option, which is included in your documents. And that would include the development of the comprehensive needs assessment, which is a requirement of the work plan. And ultimately, end with the work plan that we would begin after this planning year, keep it forward, as well as why we fulfill all of the requirements to submit to the state as part of the ESSA dedication.
Can you describe what the role will be of the partner versus the role of educators and teachers?
Yes, so the role of the partner is to help with the facilitation of the discussions. So allowing the leadership to still stay in, and lead of the process, but also be able to ask questions that, A, the leadership team may or may not have considered, but also be able to get on the balcony level, basically. What are some things that as they visit the school, as they visit classrooms, as they work with the building leadership team, we may not have noticed, or that the leadership team may not have noticed? They would also develop the tools that we would use for the needs assessment, and guide us through utilizing those tools, and provide the data that comes out of that process. And that needs assessment would be comprehensive, meaning it would include various stakeholders, including parents and students and teachers, as well as district leadership. And they would help us with developing the action plan and the work plan that comes out of that needs assessment.
And the contract would be from when to when?
The contract with CEC would be for this planning year, so the rest, the remainder of this school year.
Any requests?
I could just add, I'm assuming that we would have options to continue working with CEC. It would really depend on the designation that Parker receives next year, and the guidance that they receive from the state on how the work plan is implemented during the next three years.
So is it irregardless as to, let's just say, what the designation that they receive on, is it renewable or better? I think I remember reading something, it's a four-year, it's almost like they're going to be, I'm not going to say watching, but maybe that's what they are going to be doing, monitoring for four years, no matter what that designation gives next year. If it's a commendable or better, they will still continue to monitor the progress, monitor the progress of progress through that four-year period of time?
Yes, so all of our schools would receive that new designation or revised designation based on the data from the spring. But there is still clarity that the state needs to provide as to how the work plan for Parker would be monitored for the remaining three years. So it's basically three years plus this year consisting of the planning year.
So in the, and I'm just asking a question, because as I look through this, and then I'm thinking about this, um, the areas in which we were flagged, if I need to be a lower income. So have the, that part of the administration, or it may be premature, just kind of how we go with the year, have we identified what it is on this side, that we might be able to look at this before yet, and see where we can improve before going to this consultant? You know, if I'm on this side, I'm not, let me just say, if I'm on this side, the term of, we're going to be going here, are we able to identify and let anyone know where we fell and what we fell, and how we plan to make improvements? I see, and I saw the information in here, but I'm just asking the question, are we on a research, I mean, we do not know? Are there still some forever, or being that we're waiting, or are we going to wait to see the testing coming up? So maybe we help to see if we would improve somewhere?
Yes, so it's multiple factors, because it's measured on the student achievement growth, as well as the time of expertise of them, as well as the other indicators that ISPE is measuring us on. So they would take all of that information, couple it with the needs assessment data, and build or help us build our work plan from there. So including the student achievement piece, which in terms of the assessment that the state is following in his Parker, whatever iteration, the pilloried assessment for readiness that will become part this spring, that data will be included.
And has anybody been able to explain in this, in this process, why we found out so much? In terms of other schools were, you know, maybe they were notified, you know, because we were at commendable point at very.
Until October 15th.
Okay.
So I think that's part of the challenge, other districts found out in June.
Right.
And we found out in October. So it was a recapitation, I've not received a satisfactory answer.
And you don't know what that contributes to this at all?
No. During my initial conversations, they would point to our numbers of chronic, global chronic absenteeism. Yet those are high, but they are considerably lower than surrounding districts. And relatively speaking, it'd be hard to press to find a district that's much lower than where we're sitting, which is around 10 to 11%. So yes, absolutely could have played a part, but I don't know that that was the culprit, because we've really gotten into the weeds of the formula. To me, you can look at our growth, it was our growth of children from point A to point B at Parker, right? Whether they were low or high, that's what we have to change right away. But I just don't have a good reason on why we worked at enough of the agreement, and then we found out not to.
Or other than that?
Looking at the growth numbers, I don't think so.
So that piece we know, we actually know the growth piece is definitely identified, we're working on that piece. That's something, they definitely.
Yeah, and actually, to your point about the planning. Yeah, and actually, to your point about the planning timeline, this is a good process. So whether Parker is underperforming or commendable next year, they're still going through this process. The plan is for all of our schools to go through the quality framework review, they don't need it, but they're good practices, right? And so this is, it's a path full and we're on a spectrum of improvement. And so as we're looking at our different practices now, you know, focusing on, let's identify those deficits, let's work on them before they are.
Steve, just echo what you said again, that that is a tremendous opportunity we got, is that we are, you know, moving forward with this intentionality, always trying to, um, you know, see where we are and then move forward with that regardless of whatever rating we have. Um, and, you know, in, in no way trying to diminish our, our mission here. Um, but we're also looking into, I think in past support, the, uh, school culture and student attitude going on, the seriousness of taking, definitely.
Sure.
Again, a lot of what I've heard back and even through, you know, high school, you know, kids, the first thing you wanna know is, is this gonna affect my grade? You know, why do I have to do this? And, you know, what should be their, their buying? That has a huge impact on, uh, on student achievement. And unfortunately, and I've explained this to kids for years, that it, it does affect, you know, indirectly as a student, it certainly affects the school itself. Um, and that our goal is always to get very accurate readings, uh, so that we can apply accurate interventions if necessary and then build off of a very accurate platform, sorry, platform or scaffold, um, as, as we're given the opportunity. So again, I, you know, just as a, you know, on a board level, I guess I would encourage, um, or ask that we are, you know, probably through it with that, uh, aspect of something that affects their score but is not tied to performance.
Yeah, you've heard from adults and students that, um, enough importance wasn't placed on the assessment. And, and that's, that's a tricky statement as well, because it's one test.
Right.
And it isn't the be all end all of our school year, I mean, you saw everything you saw. What you saw today will be measured on assessments for years to come. It's love for learning that you're just, you're not going to quantify it in one score for a challenge.
Sure.
But I think we have to do a couple things. We have to share the tests, this is an important assessment. It measures where you are on a particular day in literacy or math or science, depending on the level. But on top of that, we have to, we have to understand what's in this assessment as we've adopted new materials, they've more mirror this assessment, so students are comparing and contrasting different types of texts. You'll notice that their writing is considerably more. All of those are skills that are in the Illinois Learning Standards that are going to be assessed. We need to teach those. We don't need to teach the test, we need to teach the expectation of these things. If we do that effectively, we'll be okay. The other thing we have to do is we have to address our issue of opt-outs. An incredible number of students who opted out from whichever category they're in were that four or five category. So some of our best students are deciding not to take the test and they're deciding not to take the test in droves. And it definitely hasn't mattered.
So is it, do students better making this decision over your kids or parents?
I'm probably gonna say the families. And again, it's, it's part of our storytelling. How can we tell the story on this assessment that, again, it is one assessment, it's one day, but it'll give us a benchmark of where our school system is, give us a benchmark of where our children are, and help us get better as we move forward.
Something, something that Steve's point, I think it would be very helpful for the board as you, as this plan starts to be developed in a very short amount of time, that we have a very clear understanding of what can be done that could be impactful now versus what's longer term, um, you know, expectation. Because your example to me is, you know, how to make a student to understand the importance of the exam, be excited about the exam, it's cheap like, that to me is something that can start now, right? And so we don't need to wait for a plan in writing, right? I mean, I think teachers probably have fantastic ideas about what we can start doing right now with this department.
Between March and April, we're still waiting for a clear date from the state for the new assessment. If I can just add, we absolutely have started moving on to things that we know we have control over, so we have spent our previous full improvement day last week digging into standards, looking at the data, making sure that we have action plans that we can start to develop for the standards that we know our students struggled with last year and maybe we need to revisit it more aggressively this year. Our schools are starting with perfect attendance incentives and superior attendance incentives for students to help push students who are maybe struggling with their attendance, but also really celebrate the kids who are consistently coming to school and motivate some others to do a little bit better, to reach that bar. Uh, and really making sure that instructionally, we have a clear plan between now and the state assessment of what we can do better at. We know we have the resources and the tools to teach the standards, but what needs to be tweaked a little bit and what do we need to have our eyes on closely to make sure we can do better for our students' progress?
So I think a breakdown of what can be done instructionally between now and the, yeah, this has to end here, um, what can be done in terms of encouraging climate and getting students excited. I mean, so it, it's multiple pieces, which I'm sure you all and teachers know that those multiple pieces are, but it's not just one thing that we can do that will potentially impact students', um, scores. So I think that would be very helpful, um, but I think that's a great idea and so that's something teachers could, you know, be thinking about during the break.
Yeah, so I think part of our, part of our challenge is that ready shooting piece, you know, you don't wanna get too far off over our skis. And I think as we're, so realistically, the framework is to, we have to have a pretty solid self-assessment done by the end of January. And then to Michelle's point, then I think we can really start to identify a number of these different pieces. Some of them we've just jumped off. The deep end, we need to in the standards work and the review and the curriculum mapping of those sorts of pieces, um, to make sure that we really provide the right content, the right information. And then same thing with the attendance pieces. So we can, we're absolutely going to get out there and start to run on some of the areas that we can, uh, which we wanna be very thoughtful about where we're spending our time to deliver it, right? You know, we already had Saturday school, we have after-school two drink, we're looking at the instruction in the classroom as we're deciding how to surgically move forward going through this best.
What is your thoughts on this consultant? In the memo, there's no discussion of.
Yeah, we're still in discussion with C E C right now, so we don't, um, show the exact numbers, the rating is called to fifteen thousand standards, um, but that is still being worked out in terms of what specifically they'll offer and what they'll mount.
Right, so for the most part, the grants are about fifteen thousand dollars. You can imagine the cost of each consultant is somewhere around fourteen thousand, I agree.
Yeah, so I guess I worry about, you guys are excited about, I have to tell them to be great, but I worry about it being just more his work, it doesn't actually have any impact on students. You guys are doing a great job of assessing here and figuring out the problem, we've paid for it, nothing, not getting done, passing up. So here's another layer of, oh, another, we have a school program already, you know, not working, it seems like a complex plan. So now we're gonna hire a consultant to write another plan. Um, I mean, you really think it's worth the money, fine, but it seems like a giant waste of time. It's not exciting. The problems at the end of the day are the student-teacher interaction level, it's not, it's not a fault. At the end of the day, something about that interaction needs to change. And, you know, so, so you got, talking about a consultant to come in and maybe, I think you guys have a spot, if you guys are excited about it, great, but, um, this all just feels like the state gave us a bad rating and then they're handing us money to be handed to consultants who proudly give a lot of money to policies from the state. It seems like not particularly useful to use of our time or, you know, if you want to do it, okay. But I don't really hear persuasive case that this is gonna accomplish anything. Um, everyone seems to really like C E C, people who are young, seem to be all, right? But you guys just said, you've been helping our district for years, right? And now, you've been here and why, you're helping our district. Everyone we got to show for that, nothing. I have to still move on, no results. We had a series of extremely video players, but if anyone can point to me to a distinct improvement in actual student performance at C E C three and two, I'd love to see it. But every year we're handling one, we come in, people are getting to them, and every year we're generating new people.
So in part of my historical research, you know, I've met people who are from the past, who worked with Flossmore District one sixty-one in C E C, there was a breakdown in that relationship with the previous administration, um, which stopped quite a bit of work. When we first came in, we talked about doing the quality assessment at Parker, apparently we weren't handed on and all the information was gathered and then nothing, nothing happened. And they didn't take that concept forward and apply it on. I think, again, they damaged part of the relationship and, um, some of those pieces. We can look to, so we have some options, but we've also been directed. So whether it's a consultant or whether we pair with another district, we need a learning partner moving forward as part of the framework. We can't just walk this path on our own. And so, again, we have some options, we've reached out to some other districts that have some demographics and slices of achievement that we want to dig into by now what's happening then. So we have some options. I believe our actual grant is sixty-five, sixty-five thousand dollars. So this certainly would be a part of it, which our direction we go, but you're right, I think we have to be able to quantify the effectiveness of this relationship to Cam's point. And we have been partnering with C E C for three years. So I think you can, I will tell you that you can see their fingerprints at the elementary level very well and not so much at the juvenile.
We are, remind me, we are rebanding or taking a closer look at the day that attendance is being reported and trying to see if there are some gaps perhaps in the way that it's been reported in the past to, to bring it up to where we don't need to dig in so much of here before, asking for the property or ignoring our experience to.
Yeah, there's, as we shared in previous conversations, there's probably a percent out there, maybe half, half a percent.
Because I thought H F is working on it, and if I was in that process to.
We should, we need to add H F with the Illinois State Board of Education just to get some more information about collecting attendance and all the data.
Always great to collaborate.
What did you say? Chinese has a great computer vision system. I have to see it under.
Oh, well, so.
Privacy, we knew the privacy group that were out there, camera, you know, tracked everyone's, like, school facial recognition, tracked students in expression during class and reports it out to the board.
You don't do the social stuff. But I mean, realistically, I mean, there are family trips and that's, you put those in the N D's, I mean, there's so many different ways that you can, I know where our kids are and what's on the English.
So the learning partner will be helping on the intentional side. What is the plan to give us to where we need to be to, to assess attendance, to do an audit of, um, uh, I E Ps, like all these other pieces, like where, who, who's gonna be doing that?
I think it's still a tool, right? And it's also part of the quality framework. And it looks at communication, it looks at parent engagement, classroom construction, data, use, all these different pieces. And then we have to sit back and say, okay, there are a number of different directions that we can go, where do we want to start? Obviously, as Ken said, the direct connection between teacher and student is an amazing place to start, we have to start there. But what about communication? What about telling our story? What about all these different pieces? What do we wanna hold back on, what do we wanna run with right now? Maybe it takes a long way, but just get started, we have to make progress. So all those decisions will come to the board.
And again, after the top assessment.
Correct. Now, I would, I would certainly envision more. So we'll have this on the subject of rubrics, if we can say, okay, here's where we shook out, this is our data, here's where we think we are, but I would say that whichever partner we choose, we'll be able to identify blind spots in our own self-assessment.
Any other questions or comments?
If we could just go to, there should be one document, I did update our questions, uh, if you would scroll down to that bottom page here. Just wanted to recap and bring a couple of questions back. Uh, some of these had been answered and some, you know, some of these will be addressed as we have further conversations, but the strategic plan came up and where all of this board goes into that. After the first of the year, the board will begin carrying information on different processes that we're going to use, because we are in year four of our strategic plan, we need to move forward, get into year five, come up with a plan that is measurable, that is transparent, and that everyone understands we can take and implement. So the thought is the board, this current board will approve a plan moving forward, no later than, uh, the business meeting in April of twenty nineteen. As we're talking about our expectations for instruction, as we're talking about our expectations for achievement in the various classes, we've also talked about that portrait of graduate. So what is our, what does our graduating E three student look like? And then we can work backwards. What commitments are we gonna make to our children? And when they walk out of Parker Junior High as eighth graders, this is what we hope that they're, that they know and are able to demonstrate. So the district leadership team, which starts meeting in January, will be working on that specifically. And we will focus on our social, emotional learning team for the whole child, not just our academic pieces, we're growing citizens and humans, we want to be respectful of that. When we think about our instructional strategies, again, that's the instructional framework that we have, uh, but we do have a lag in our adoption kind of cycle. We did math last year, we did literacy this year, capturing kids' hearts at Parker Junior High, or would make capturing kids' hearts next year at the elementary level. So we do have a lag in our curriculum adoption cycle. It's a perfect time to do a reset on our standards, make sure that we all understand, best practices around student engagement, around student learning, and that we're implementing those with fidelity. And then as we're, there's a question about recruit, recruiting, and we, you know, we do, we post our jobs online, but we're also gonna hit a number of job pairs to identify our, um, college groups. And the other piece is effectively hiring teachers. Uh, there's a shortage for sure. We can really make our lives easier though if the teachers who we actually, actually hire and bring into our schools are of real high quality, we see them teach. We always check references, we have a number of new processes with teachers and principals and Amabel and myself, all to make sure that the people who are bringing are those the people possible. So we'll continue to recruit wherever we can, uh, but we'll also make sure that we're hiring the right people as well.
So a couple of questions. Um, thanks for bringing these questions back, but with regards to recruitment and retention, um, we don't have to answer this question tonight, but I would, it would be helpful to do some sort of internal assessment on, um, idea of an H R director and whether or not we need someone whose job is fully focused on recruitment and, and retention and all the other stuff that falls under H R, um, because that's something that we have in our district. And then, um, the possibility of, I mean, I don't have any position in, how many positions did we, how many of teachers did we bring on this week?
Parker alone, there were probably twenty, teachers and staff, right? It comes around twenty, twenty five. Yeah, twenty, and teachers, every one.
That's at Parker?
That's at Parker alone.
Okay, and then you include elementary school?
Much less, yeah, but, because we'll take a huge trip over here.
I mean, so, you know, can we have our own fair? Job fair? Um, you know, I'd love for us to think about ways of marketing Flossmore District. I mean, obviously, we can do thereby participating in, um, statewide job fairs and, and strengthening our partnership, our relationship and creating partnerships with some of our local colleges and universities, but. and universities, but I feel like there's an opportunity for us to really market the Flossmore School District, and I don't think anyone can do that better than the district itself. So, thinking about having, you know, a job fair and being a partnership with...
Who would our audience be?
Who would our audience be?
Because in the past, I found, truthfully, job fairs are like open houses. You sell drugs, right? You make it a couple of people, but it's a lot of movement for not as much achievement, right? So, who would we target if we were to put together our job fairs or marketing?
Well, the question... Where do you find... You talk about high-quality teams, right? Where do you think we'll find them? Will we find young college graduates who find the school districts as a victory?
Yes. So, realistically, you will find them in college, and you will find them in districts that pay less than us.
So, then, we could advertise in all of our local colleges and universities. I mean, I know in my university, I mean, in our college and ed newsletter, we monthly have listings of local fairs that are held by...
There's more to it, right? So, speaking of the luxury of... I have two full-time recruiting people plus two major people. And all... The recruiting people are focused on recruiting these twenty-two million years, so spoiler, right, as compared to our resources. A huge chunk of it of the process is buzz before we ever reach a person. I mean, people are knocking down our door, just wanting to try to get a job. That's nice. I don't think one sixty-one has that problem now.
Sure.
And that's a good problem to have. I, you know, and I wasn't always that way. I think ten years ago, I distinctly remember a university in Chicago, and part of students that turned up and does some work for me. And now, you know, we can't get that too in the way we're doing. But, so, part of that, as you already said, you know, maybe some of our positive marketing efforts can be right up the front. Those same crowds, I mean, things like that video are awesome. I think that would get a, you know, a few optics type about fourteen-year. So, specific, you know, more organic, positive imaging in the district will help improve the pool of candidates.
And I think honestly, once we negotiate, I think we have to look at how we attract those, these strong candidates. Look at districts that have really strong young cores, they're paying students loans, right? They are... They're figuring out ways to make the position attractive. People will want to come to Flossmore, sure, but if you're not from South Cook, you have no idea who Flossmore is. And if you're going to come down here as opposed to Wilmette or DuPage or you're going to pick, there's probably not a strong draw.
For example, I'm just... My own experience is, so, I don't... My office doesn't pay market, right? DuPage is just a tad low, and so, that's a recruiting challenge, right? And you don't do that at a hospital, really, because that's a $50,000 dollar in your next big business. So, that was, you know, ten years ago. I say the direction started on the right corner section. The John Markey, he was, you know, taking a... We also, you know, marketing around the quality of place to work, really, you know, my mom had a fairly effective group. In my industry, there are websites and places that students go to learn about what you really like working in, right? I don't know if there's a book on that here in the education business, or people just use Glassdoor or things like that. You know, we're in that position where, okay, so, we're not going to... We're not going to be able to compete in order to compete with the, you know, the one at the New Jersey High School Districts. We need to have a little extra on the following marketing goals, the same following candidates.
Sure.
So, it can be done.
Oh, absolutely.
It can be done without actually, you know, necessarily paying, but just making a place where people work.
And I don't think, I mean, you've already got a hundred jobs, Brandon has a hundred jobs.
Yep.
You know, and, I mean, so, I don't... I don't think this is anything that you guys can take up. I think the whole point is that there isn't anyone whose job is fully focused on. How do we do the strategic B? And how do, you know, we start creating a pipeline of potential, you know, students who are currently in college to get them introduced to our district? So, but it's worth...
True. Both in the conversation. Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments on...
I have one. So, Dana, what are you thinking in terms of making sure that the community understands the process that we're going through, that you're kind of the journey that we're on? Just to make sure that... I hate for people to feel like we didn't get commendable. What are we doing? I can tell you that.
Sure.
So, how concrete can you get? And how often do you think you can realistically update the community in a way in multiple formats so that people are aware after work?
Well, I think we have to. We can't wait for visions. Visions is nice, but for the most part, it's really good-looking pictures of our kids and our teachers and all the great things in there. We're looking at doing a monthly e-newsletter, list, you know, the updates. But again, you know, between now and February, you know, I think people want to splash. There is no splash, right? It's making large pronouncements without having the actual data on what we need to do next. We'll just do nothing but bring trust, if you ask me. And so, I think we can talk about the work that we're doing, but again, until the board decides to have, based on the assessment framework and the rubers essentially, I think we're kind of in a hole, kind of. We're doing the work, the changes that we made just off the cuff. But we have to get through that rubric, because that is how we're going to be judged moving forward. And so, I frankly, it's worked with Amy Kent to put together a communications plan that we can bring to the board, you know, set out our timelines for sharing all the information, because for the most part, we process data. Like, here's what we said we were going to do. We're going to really dig into after-school tutoring. Here it is. We've done, these are the number of kids we fit. These are the great things that are happening in after-school tutoring, but we won't have a payout until all this work, until that part of data comes in.
Right. I think, I just want to make sure that there is a high enough level of transparency that says what you just said.
Sure.
We're working. We really are. We're doing this work, and we're on a journey, and here are the pieces that we're trying to figure out. I don't... I think people will appreciate that, especially those fifth graders heading for Parker next year. And it's a relief to hear that you are doing all of these things. I don't think people need data and concrete answers every two weeks. They need to know that this is serious, this is important, this kind of process is in place.
Agreed.
So, it can maybe, for right now, be an update on that. So, where...
Where I'd be happy to talk about.
Right. Yeah, yes, this is... Right, this is very... This is a high priority for the district. And...
Yeah, I agree. It is monthly. It's a... We purchased our constant contact account.
Yeah.
And so, we're going to start pushing those out now. Let's just get started. But that's an easy way to push out more long-form information that we're producing. So, Amy is a machine. She is constantly generating content. So, we can also put out multiple pieces, but it's also on a monthly basis. Every three to four weeks, we're sending out an update on the work attempt. So, if that's okay, let's... We can start there. I think we keep the visions going. You know, that goes out to everybody within our school district boundary. And that's, again, it's a lot of pictures, but the monthly e-news can give a little more.
And that goes out to...
We're going to have to... That will have to market a little bit. We'll hit everyone in our district. My concern is the families in the community without children.
Right.
Because we'll pull, you know, we have a connection with the... So, we can pull all our Flossmore email addresses, and we can... Or we'll check our eyes and get everything posted. We'll probably, you probably see a little bit more of media blitz, social media blitz on this one, to get families to like it, so that we can get more people signed up for the direct email campaign.
I think there should also... I think that's great. That's one-way communication. So, when you feel like you're ready, I think there should be an opportunity for a Q and A. I mean, maybe that could be one of your copy chapters. There has to be a way for residents in our district to be able to ask questions, you know, outside, because obviously, we know that doesn't happen here.
Sure.
We need to create that opportunity.
Absolutely. We'll do, and we deserve it once and for all.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, we're going to move on. Karen, no. Discussion of requests for qualifications for architectural services.
We have an opportunity to see a number of ribbon in our presentation. Thank you to Kim for coming out. And we said to those, I would say, a lot of them were the same, what we do. We have to find a firm that we're comfortable with. I think each of us liked something about some of the different firms, the connections, knowledge of them. But when we think about what we're trying to do here, Walt stood out planning-wise. I would say they're all probably very similar. Walt has in-house engineers, which should set them just a little bit apart. Long-range planning is another piece. I've seen them excel at community engagement and discussions around facilities planning. So, right now, Walt is the recommendation. We have their documents attached if there are any questions.
Seems like a lot of your work is north and west of us. Is that a concern?
Not to me. No, but Fran, when I have talked about that, you know, again, it's an issue potentially. But...
Effective work is effective work. We knew what we were doing were key, and we still walk through that, plus up.
And I think you referenced a lengthy discussion on the candidates. It included one board member who was a board member.
So, we had... So, the board... It would be very, very nice if the board companies as with Walt, that the one in this spectrum being sort of, this is the most polished presentation, probably the best looking samples, engineering, and staff. So, they were... But I imagine, if we haven't really discussed cost, right? I imagine that, you know, Walt is here, let's get people excited about ideas, but probably ultimately, it costs a little more on the long-term end of the spectrum. But the other spectrum, we have a firm that we thought through that's very homely, not quite the portfolio that the other firms offer in terms of design, a little harder to build, and exciting around that. On the other hand, you know, Frank, having a... The idea I have is on the local, see, as opposed to Palatine, is feeling. I think amongst the three of us, after we talked to everyone, you know, if the one thing that the firm had, that is the local firm, that sort of probably lower cost in the spectrum, we didn't talk about, but I'm just guessing, the design, so... One thing that they did plus Walt on was questionability of long-term planning. They really missed, didn't understand the question we asked them to present. And that seems to be a need that we don't... A need that we need to have, right? So, what is a long-term planning that you can do? And, you know, so you can go down the list, right? So, first firm did best on that question, and second firm was... And then, by the way, you just draw a line, right? So, it was Palatine, and then, like, Burman, or Dale, and then Iowa. Yeah, and so, the closer they got, the likely cheaper they got, the less Walt did on question of long-term planning, and the less... The less exciting portfolios were sort of the type of work that they did. Walt was the only one that didn't house in here. Wasn't a make or break deal. For me personally, it was that the guy was excited about being in here, and you work that into the design, right? So, you know, somebody who cares about systems and long-term cost of the building, right? So, the kind of guy that sort of geeked out about, like, oh, this boiler's going to save you money over fifty years. That seemed to be a useful course of long-term planning. But I would say that at the conclusion of our meeting, we kind of just, we'd be talking to, well, the first two are better fit for long-term planning, the ancient portfolio. I don't think any of those left room, like, this is the one winner I want. I think it was more, well, okay, we got to pick someone, and, you know, that's sort of where we basically, at the end of the meeting, would have asked two.
Who was the second?
Remember the name, second one?
Arcon.
Arcon, yeah. So, but then, as far as discussions go, I don't know if we need that further discussion then about what cost, deep contract would look like?
No, essentially, after this meeting, we would start on a path of figuring out cost and post-person.
You have experience with this outfit in your prior lives?
I do. I do. So, again, so, the local firm was Tria, they came in probably before, but for Arcon was second. D L A, which is who the high school uses, maybe I didn't...
They're not a tech.
Right. And then, at the end, you know, Arcon, which, you know, just said not to go, and then Walt kind of goes to the top. I think it was take the feedback from the entire entirety of the committee, they kind of led this recommendation.
So, this is... This is the third firm that we approved this in, coming on board in the last eleven and a half years. Is that typical? Is it every super that comes in, and it comes in, the dust settles, and they bring in their shop?
I don't know. It depends. I mean, we can say with Green, there did not seem to be a lot of overall satisfaction with that as a thing. And we can reject all of these and go back to them and say, hey, we're going to stick with you. I would tell you that I wouldn't recommend it after having two projects that we just punch listed, projects that should have been finished in August. Just now, I saw him on, what was it, last...
Question.
Right. It's just unacceptable. I don't care who the contractor is. So, we have to figure out a way to stop those issues and stop the over-promising and underperforming, or inject it to the other root cause of what's happening that's preventing our work from being... So, it becomes a quality of life issue for our teachers, for Scott, for our teams who are in the building working. We have these things that are on the scene. It's just unacceptable. One, two, to the point about the long-term planning, that's where... That's what we have to figure out. We have this building. We don't have gyms at Serena and Flossmore Hills. We have some in areas. We have Parker, which was actually pretty good. We have Heather Hill, which was built as a open concept school that people have balls to. We don't have their conditioning at Westerns. We have an office that's big enough for this building with no students, but not our largest elementary school. So, we have a lot of cost. We also identified nine million dollars in upkeep costs through our facility survey. So, we need a partner who's going to help us lay out the next ten years and help us either choose Path A or choose Path B, and what that means with the different folks in the room.
I would want more than... My personal view is I want more than any. Again, these buildings have fifty-hundred-year lifespans and we do bond issues on technical cycles, and the buildings need a thirty, forty-year plan, which we don't have. I don't think this is, you know, all the structural stuff we were just talking about is a matched higher priority than this, but this is a, if you said if we, you know, if we're looking at our tech, we might as well pick one that can support that plan. Tria was an interesting choice, it's a local, they're growing. You can hold... You can't really hold their portfolio against them too much, because they're the small guys that are doing the smaller job, right? So, they don't have the budget to make it look cool like the other guys did. So, but they didn't... We asked them two or three times about long-term planning, and they really changed the question. And so, I took that and they didn't... They just wanted me to get the question, tell me... And so I took that as, they just wanted to get the question, it tells me they don't have a lot of depth there on long-term planning. Um, uh, DLA was interesting to us because it's a high school's, um, firm, and they're down here in town, so the idea that they're gonna be here more often was sort of appealing, but there really wasn't anything else about the discussion. That went well, I guess, with, uh, with the plan.
And they really, there's some really strong work in the key setting, but as much of that work, I don't know, flip side of that, it's a connection to Scott, to Brandon, and to those relationships, and we just did not, there was wasn't a connection, so it's confusing.
So what do we do with the, with the contract negotiation stage? So, uh, does everyone just take the percentage of the construction cost, so it doesn't matter? Um, if you want a long-term planning, maybe they'll supply people. What do we do if they come back, if Walt comes back with N S T. lunch? Um, do we go and look back at the different firms?
We can, we can do anything. And then we start with, it's pretty regulated, and so we have a little bit of flexibility, but I would say that much, Fran.
It is pretty regulated, and you don't really specify for particular jobs to use. I don't know what to do. There is a general contract on which Walt was getting to me this week, and actually I, they have a contract that John Sizer's already worked on, P D. D. M., so they're making that model what our school looks like. Um, they're gonna be getting that too. So I actually haven't seen it quite yet, but you don't talk about price per project, so you can't just project.
How does that work in the case where we want a long-term plan? So if you want a plan for your school, and I want to build or remodel it for 20 years?
Then you're gonna be cap, what the, what they would charge on a more hourly basis, if you know, um, it doesn't matter if you're a project, so generally a percentage of the project cost.
Can you remind us, what did the facility survey?
The facility service we, survey we did for school.
And will the architect accept the...
Yes, as a matter of fact, that's the document that we used when we put out the R Q. We gave that to all the architects to use as a general basis for distribution.
Walt, dentistry, did their comments, and they actually write it?
Any other questions? In the area?
I guess I'll ask you a, is there any, um, I think I already did the answer to this. Um, is there any reason why we might consider, um, one longer-term vision architect or a longer-term vision, uh, project, and then something that is a local, um, job or something that is on a smaller scale, would that just be too easy?
Or too expensive?
Too expensive.
Yeah. It'd be easier to choose one, Fran.
Okay. If I could.
I would imagine that if we, so the real money decision of the board is, are we gonna do a long-term plan, and are we going to base on an hourly basis, such as, so that's sort of, I imagine it more flexibility to lean on a single one and say, well, come on, ease up on the hourly rate, because you're gonna get this work eventually, we just need to help the building vision for the, each building as a whole. But, you know, our, but these are all things that I think we should discuss when we get around to that decision of, are we going to actually, um, spend money on a long-term plan, or what are we doing in the next two or three years?
Do we have a, a previous, we've gone through three architects in the last 11 years. Do we, have there been other long-term plans? Um, I think of this in terms of, you know, bought my house, there is a, the penultimate owner had gone through these elaborate plans of expanding, you know, the house, and of course, some of which were kind of interesting, but mostly it's just rolled up and shoved away somewhere. Is there any long-term plans that were from a while back that we looked at and said, you know, this is...
We were listening, I mean, along those lines. I mean, realistically, we're looking for 10, 15, 25-year plan that has built-in trigger points for us to have a conversation about the office of Western or, you know, gym space, five-year enrollment projections, 10-year enrollment projections.
Cafeteria Parker.
What'd I say?
The cafeteria parker.
Cafeteria Parker, which we do have next door.
That's a possibility.
Right? So, that's ultimately, it is a systematic process for us, it's still a group, it happens consistently, and so these conversations aren't a surprise, and so the planning that goes into it is frantic, it's very methodical, and it's system in a way that we can make the best decisions based on current data, but also the best projections possible.
And I think we want to avoid, like, coming to the bond issue, three months after, four months after that, you know, the board finds out that, oh, we're supposed to be dealing waivers if we're not actually complying with state law on gym, uh, gym time, and then, oh, well, we can't do that because we don't have the gym space. And yet, no discussion of gym space ever came out during spending, you know, pay time on the board, or whatever. So I would hope, I would hope, I guess my thought of long-term planning here would be the future board and board members would say, please, change or reject the, say, plans of 2022, new bond issue, we're thinking maybe these projects, 2032, maybe those projects. Um, it's a lot easier to have a fruitful discussion, even if someone comes in and gave you, hey, I mean, 2032, great, let's change it. Then, you know, the opposite, the opposite of that, we had with Green, they came in with the, with, you know, they keep going, they just show up, they're here, oh, we have some life safety. Some of them are like, why didn't you buy this last year? Right? Why is this, this space behind the features of Parker? It's been code violation for 30 years, why is it a problem now? And to that, you know, and what is a long-term plan for Parker? We can put that off until, when they try to send it to you. So, I think we can make that a use of capital in the difference, we have eight, it doesn't have to be a rich one, but, you know, it's your life, eat your organic cost.
Sure. Absolutely.
So how do these plans, if going forward in the long-term plan, was even though the plans are not necessarily stuck with that particular contract, is that what you're saying? Because I think there's some complacency that we can, can happen after we continue to do the same company over and over and over again. I mean, we would think that they would appreciate the business and the money and other things, if this was the case, I mean, you continue, you know, it would be a whole project that we need to work for, and then they start winding off a little bit, and, you know, you're forced to find somebody else, and it could be in the middle of a project, and that person on that company is that stuck. So I just want to be sure that, you know, what you're saying, that even though the plans are going forward, but not necessarily that they're stuck with these...
And that was my little discussion, so we're on the road, where we say, we want Key, then we don't have a plan. So it's, and I, and I wouldn't, and I'm, I would say it would be close to figures. Um, for, you know, so let's say for example, a hundred thousand dollars, go for a long-term plan for all five of them. Uh, then you're free, there's, there might be implied, hey, you, you're up there, you have a senior on, that they might hire you, or at least you're in a preferred position. But certainly, that, that's not a contractual promise, right? So then, you could, when you come time to actually execute, you can hire your architect to plan you. Um, that's part of cost issue too, right? So maybe we're not just going to market about a dollar, maybe we want to play a dollar on a, on a, you know, the real work and the details will come in when, the architect firm is, it'll be excited when the board is actually going to commit the project.
Right.
Um, because of the way funding is there, and the work that they're asking for. So I don't, so, I mean, all this stuff can be discussed later, but I don't think that we need any of this, I, um, like, you made a long-term plan, that's fine, you know, but I'm not even, anyway, uh, architect, he's up to, he's kind of a child, or a greater choosing architect, if you want.
And it came to what, having the real conversation, I kind of brought this up, Heather Hill has the largest, largest gym, Z Western, right? It's a small elementary school. So, on our end, asking the questions, having the conversations, so that we're purposeful on all those two districts. And we know exactly what's going to anticipate as well as possible.
Any other questions? Discussion of psychologist intern.
Is there any question to us specifically? It's the same request as last year.
I think I have a couple of houses. So this person rotates through all the schools, or actually they're most of it?
No, the person would be, we're hoping for two, actually. The person would be attached to our psychologists, and they would work with them directly in the schools that they're assigned to.
And so they, so by attached, so then what's the reporting mechanism? Like, who's monitoring?
Doesn't work. The psychologist is working directly with the intern and monitoring the intern, but the intern can do some testing, or do file reviews, work with the students, provide groups, while the psychologist is doing the same thing, and we can double the number of students. And our psychologists are heavily involved in our process, which is pre-special ed, which is what we'd like to help train the interns in, and really work with them, and be able to increase our time in the M C S S. process, the pre, pre-special ed, so that we can really make a larger impact.
So then for the internship that's normally here, so are they coming in, and so this is so, I, let me start by saying, I think it's a good idea, but with interns come challenges, at least in the corporate world sometimes. And so making sure that their work product is monitored, and who they are responsible to when, when they leave, because they are staying with that, right? So when they leave, that, you know, we are constantly, like, if this is something that we're gonna do, then like, we are constantly reviewing this, bill every single factor of the intern, because sometimes it takes, not take, but, but, you know, really good a term, and then you do other things, and then they go. And then you get another intern, who might not be quite as wonderful, and then it makes more the existing staff because of this. So just kind of like making sure the continuity, that somebody's held accountable, that it's not just, oh, yeah, come on in, here's your case, well, because you need the help, but also making sure that it is, they're contributing, they're not just getting their credit.
The reason why we didn't have an intern last year is because none of the candidates that we interviewed, we felt would be a positive to our environment. Um, interning in this, in this vein is very much like student teaching. It is, in fact, their psychologist student teaching, which is for a year. And so I agree with you 100%. We do not, we do not want to have an intern who, based on an interview, we wouldn't feel would be an asset to us. Like, I've had interns in the past that have developed programs that we have done, taken on, um, as our staff and worked with and continued those programs. If we didn't have another intern the following year, or if we had an intern that wasn't, wasn't capable of doing that, we hope we wouldn't have offered them a position. So we are looking for high-quality interns, and I'd rather not fill the position than to have somebody who would be taking our staff's time to, to, to really bring up to our level, even though they're new, they're, they're, you still come in with a level of knowledge and rigor.
What's the education, at least, bachelor's or do you master's?
Um, they are typically bachelors, but there could be, they could have a bachelor's degree in something else, and then gone back and had a master's degree. A lot of times, the psych program can be a five-year program, because it's educational psych, and they have additional hours.
So these are essentially, for me?
Any of you?
These are essentially 20 or 21-year, like, these, these interns?
Sure, 20, yeah, 22. It does depend on whether it's, they're coming from a bachelor's program.
I have a question. I just want to recap, did you say we did not do this last year?
We tried, and...
That I would remember.
Right. And the, the people that applied to the decision, we were a little late, later last year, and some of the, the people that we maybe have been able to employ have already found other internships, which is why we brought it to this event in the summer, to, for approval in January, um, and we're hoping to get really high-quality candidates.
So, and just let's just say, we, we, is it a possibility, you know, that we get high-quality candidates in this program? Is it a possibility to have those who have become back to us, or even in a work second type, you know, that we can offer by doing their internship, you're almost like a residency in some parts, or, you know, like with a doctor or something, but any, anything like that? I mean, I know you don't have much to deal off of, because last year, we did not do it.
Once, once they completed their internship and they graduated, they would be looking for a full-time position. Um, if we were to add a full-time psychology position, psychologist position to the district, then we would definitely have an opening. It's, again, it's like student teaching. If, if we like the candidate, then we certainly, if we have a job available, we can certainly rule them in and hire them to a full-time for the past year.
And I think a case can be made, but we're understaffed.
Yeah.
With psychologists.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to move to the last item under discussion, which is of the April, it's discussion of April 2019, Board 18.
Chair, um, we're recommending moving, we can leave the hall from the 22nd to the 29th. Uh, the election results don't have to be canvassed until the 23rd, so we could have a reorganization of meeting and not have final results. So the 29th would ensure that we have the most current, accurate data.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, we are going to move through a number of action items.
Yes. May I please recommend that we pull a little bit? We have not, uh, received our updated logo yet. Right? Yep. So, we'll just give Key a little bit more time to work on, and she's, and we had a name issue, and we were switching around, and we wanted to adjust the thickness, I believe, of one side of the room, so we're still working on that, or, you know, like, the color from the, the dark name. But also, we have, uh, people who have elevated K-12 Spanish teacher, we were not able to find a Spanish teacher for the second semester. So in order to keep that Spanish class going, we recommend reapproval. We have, obviously, we spoke about it a billion years ago, but we did not speak about it at our last board meeting, so if we want to pull it off for discussions, we absolutely do that and bring it back in January for approval, but this will be the same agreement as we have current.
So any questions that we have regarding that? Is that for you?
Every one of them. Absolutely.
I just want to know if you're a professional, that you talked about building in, and I'm guessing that would be a couple of those five English, correct? And would not, is somebody working on monitoring the class?
Yep, currently, the person monitors the class. This is, this would not change anything that we're giving them.
So we can pull it, we can...
So, we, we, again, so we've already had, we've already had this discussion, though. Remember, we approved it one time, this is the exact same process. So we could have somebody bring it back, we have a class starting in January.
So what I was going to say was, we can go through these action items, um, as we should, and if there is discussion on that item, then we can have the discussion.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt a property tax levy for levy year 2018 for CPI 2.1% in accordance with the law under the property tax extension limitation law? Second? Nina, throw it up, please. Okay, Grace? Yes? Simmons?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Huckabee?
No.
Ford? Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion to approve applying for the property tax relief grant, providing expected tax relief of $2,639,000? So, right here. Any questions? Roll call, please. Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Ford? Yes, and the motion has passed. Next, our approval of bills. The bills are submitted for approval by the board at each month, and Dr. [inaudible]. The bills are submitted for approval by the Board of Ed each month, and Dr. Perry and Grace is asked to review the bills for the month of December, and is had the opportunity to review them prior to meetings. Yeah, I reviewed the bills and I have a question for Fran. I realize now that the second question I asked you doesn't show up on our agenda, so it may as well be another time. So may I have a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $666,400,000 to something three cents for the local? Brokoff, please.
Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion to approve payroll in the amount of $1,566,000? For the month of November as presented. A million, five sixty-six. Oh, you don't, something's wrong with this camera.
Should be four ten?
Yeah.
What's the correct?
Four ten?
It should be one thousand, one hundred and sixty-six, five hundred and sixty-six, $410.50.
Can I have a motion, please?
Right call. And who checked in that one? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay. Okay, Grace? Yes. Paredes?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion to approve personal reports?
So we can do that.
I wanted to, I wanted to take all the form, no report, so we, I have some questions that I want to ask.
So you want to pull it?
Pull it, so we know what we're doing, but first we can come back.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the 2018 audit reported financial statements as presented?
So, second.
Brokoff, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of revised board policy 417? Steve? I am very sorry. Can I have a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of revised board policy 417?
So, no comments?
Second?
Second.
Brokoff, please. Okay, I'm sorry. Questions or comments?
Just one real quick question. On the unsafe school, I wanted to know, since we wanted to go through it.
Where do you look again, I'm sorry?
Very, very much, but I have to check. But dealing with unsafe schools.
Unsafe school choice, I think you're going to-
Yes, that's what I want to talk about.
That is at page four or five of revised policy. Okay, good.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood this. This is, is this regard, is this reciprocal in the sense that is this regarding our district? And then if somebody comes and can transfer into our district, some of the, we cover, if we, how to say, I just want to clarify.
I have, you know, we will have to convene with the conversation where I can get your questions and then I can reach out to the student.
That's, that's the only thing I want to sort of do, is reciprocal, like is it for a, is here that may feel, or for some reason was written under this particular policy, but do we accept students that maybe from another district who for some reason they cannot place that child and can bring and put that child here because of it?
In my experience, it's your choice. So you can, you can determine whether or not to accept a student from a district, but I don't think it can be forced by, if that makes sense. So just because a student comes from someplace else that's been deemed unsafe, doesn't, in my experience, it's not an automatic entrance ticket to your school district. But I will verify.
I'm looking at the state sketch. The state law requires that each school board have a policy that allows a student to transfer out. It doesn't say in this particular section of the statute that it's still a duty required to accept a transfer.
Right, okay. That's awesome. So it's out of this district, because that's what you're saying?
Right.
Okay, that's it. Okay.
Thank you.
Brokoff, please.
Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Yes. I didn't hear my name, sorry. And the most, that's bad. Chill, okay, no. What, is it like missing? The first part, is it, we've got ways to get up.
We will, just briefly, we will bring those procedures back because we'll look for them. I'm assuming we don't have them. So we should have these procedures on, some might bring these back for the board to consider.
That motion has passed. Can I have a motion to approve the contract extension until July 31st, 2019 with RMG Consultants at the current 5% rate of recovered Medicaid fee for service funds? A second?
Right here.
Steve?
I'm just, just real curious, why do that? If you get the contract in, if we all extend it again after December 31st, why, why did it get to this point for an extension? I'm just curious as to why it got to this point and why we're not looking at a new contract to extend instead of extending? Is there some circumstances around this in terms of that? I mean, like, did we just realize the contract was coming up?
No, so at our last meeting where we talked about this initially, part of, we're trying to determine the best way to move forward with our Medicaid building. Essentially, we can do it through our new IP system, but we already have a system in place. So now we're trying to figure out which is the most effective way to do it, that saves the most time, gets us the most money back, but also is the easiest to do, so. Yeah, just a little bit, because what we'll do is we'll make it, we'll dislocate this into our extended school year and that part of summer school, that'll give the teachers enough time in the system, because essentially what you do is you track them all your time using the software, and then it'll determine how much money we would reimburse for. It just buys us a little bit more time to make the best decision. And honestly, ideally, it would be tied to our IP system, which will make sure that that's the right, the best way to go. That's a really good question.
Any more questions? Brokoff, please.
Simmons?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Huckabee? Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion to approve the no increase in the self-insured dental premium for the calendar year 2019 and a 2.4% increase for the dental agent opening?
So.
A second?
Second, I've got a question. I just wanted to clarify something. What I read in the, so is it, if I think I, the cost of whatever increase, that's not going to be on the issue, it'll be on the, this is right?
All right, this is, this one's clear.
Brokoff, please.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and motion has passed. Can I have a motion to approve the contract for the elevated K12 Spanish course at Parker Junior High School for the second semester at a cost of $32,500?
So, move.
Any second?
Right here.
Any discussion?
Yes. So I just wanted, I know you said a paraprofessional that is going to be in these bits, to their class, or the guy who's to the bit, but that person will not, anyway, it's just a model, that's it. They're not in any way, like a model of a student I'm looking at and I'm virtually in, maybe I have a question that maybe I couldn't get over to this, they're not able to assist this kid.
They can, they can assist, they can assist, but the, as I've observed the classroom, they are more monitor support as opposed to instructional support, if that makes sense. So make sure that the classroom is fully, make sure that everyone's where they need to be as opposed to, you need help conjugating this verb into Spanish, that's not their wheelhouse. At least as, as I see.
Yeah, so they're great, the paraprofessional, if the student, the student would ask the instructional question to the teacher, the teacher that they're working with virtually, if there's an issue with the student getting the question to the teacher, the paraprofessional, the expectation is that they would help with signaling the teacher, or they, they're able to digitally connect with the teacher and say, hey, please pause, you have a question, or a teacher or a student is struggling with their device to be able to contact you. That would be their goal.
So the money that is being paid for this program, I think I thought it was like thirty-something thousand dollars.
Thirty-two thousand dollars.
Yes, but there's a program monitor also, somebody, well, not a monitor, somebody that's coming to almost like supervise this program. Yes, so the cost of all of that, that person, then the virtual instruction that's being received and the paraprofessional, all of this is locked into, I saw the separate 15 something, or the paraprofessional, all of that, it's all locked in, there is no additional fee outside of that for the program.
Right. Right, so the program pays for one of their employees to be in the class at all times as well, and that person supports with technology or any issues that may come up in the class as well. That person is not our employee. If that helps.
There's more technical terms in case on this.
Yep, so if there's an issue with the sound, or if there's an issue with the devices, that person is there of all kinds, you know, they help with the assessments and anything else on the elevate side that needs to be addressed.
What happens with this, this phrase, you know, the term of these type of connection issues?
Yeah, that's been, that's been the challenge. They, that person troubleshoots, the elevate staff, I will say, is super responsive, they are, would they be with us constantly, they are always checking in. One of the changes that they're making is that students will now view the course through their home versus having, who had any sound issues with students viewing the course on the screen. But they, that, that's the, the challenge with it, and also the full, the elevate staff person to sort of form an experience with that.
It's a strong program, it can replace it. So our, our focus is on finding a fully certified Spanish teacher for this role next year. It's got us through a tough spot, and I absolutely see a role for virtual learning in our district moving forward, but we need a teacher. Plain and simple. This, this helps us live to the finish line, but we contacted the university, we reached out, again, we, I tried calling every favorite to possibly find an add-on with people, and there are just no Spanish teachers.
So, a question. The, can we look into maybe a hybrid version of this? And my other question to proceed this is, do we have a measure of how successful this was with our kids that, you know, is maybe reliable outside of the vendor that's providing the service?
Yep. So this is intro, this is the intro to Spanish class. This is in addition to try to offer some earlier access to language as opposed to just say three. We could look at how you measure the progress. The question would be, what's the point of the course? And I think that we have to have that discussion in the board.
Yeah, that's like pre-Spanish one, though. Ideally, when these kids enter Spanish one, they will be much more successful, but we can debate that.
Right.
I say this because one of my observations, taking the number of language classes in the same different programs over the years, is that kids in traditional language classes, when I went to HJ, I did Spanish for four years. I actually didn't learn Spanish until I got out of high school, but I was literate in Spanish. I could read Spanish and write Spanish very well. Leaving my senior year of high school, I really didn't speak very much at all. And even now, you know, I run into people who graduate from, you know, very nice schools, you know, very highly regarded language programs, they got an A+ in AP Spanish, and they cannot speak Spanish or French or whatever language, because they, they lack that authentic communication that oral language experience. And so one of the things I was very excited about with this is that this could provide an authentic, you know, speaking experience for the kids where they feel safe, they weren't looking over their shoulder wondering what accent was, or, you know, everyone else is making fun of them, which again is one of the huge issues with foreign language. And that, just, I was curious in terms of if we could measure, you know, to some degree, how do they compare to kids that have been in a traditional class to see, well, I mean, I know we're looking for a Spanish teacher, we say we want a Spanish teacher, but, you know, maybe are there some merits here? You know, maybe it's turned out into exclusive, and is there a hybrid version of this where maybe we need a part-time Spanish teacher, you know, that we can share with another district? So that, you know, we don't have to, you know, we kind of pool resources if somebody is nearby, where this Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, we have a teacher in the building, and then following Tuesday, Thursday, or sorry, Tuesday, Friday, or whatever, we have someone in the building, and we keep swapping out. Because again, the thing that I'm concerned about in foreign language is the kids are not actually speaking. They're not going to speak Spanish. They're going to be very good at reading and reading Spanish of high value, but, or French, or Italian, or German, or Chinese, or whatever, but they need to be speaking at some point.
Yeah, I would agree. I think again, this on a larger view of district wants to learn education, I think this is the area that we've been talking about, what is, what, where we're trying to go with language. Really trying to make sure the kids are bi-literate and bilingual when they leave, then we can start performing platforms of kindergarten.
Yeah.
So if we want to aggressively recruit typically difficult to hire DSL teachers and viable teachers, we need to do a language program. Right, so I think there are things that we can look at that could offer different options for kids, depending on our overall goals. But again, it comes to commitments that we're going to make, because now we're, we're starting in kindergarten, we have to start down that path. You have language models, you have all these different pieces that go into it, but you know where you're going, right? So I think there's a number of options, I think the hybrid option, I think that's a really good thing. We contacted, I know we contacted everyone who touches us for sure to find out if there is a piece of a teacher floating around out there that we can, you know, kind of connect with, didn't have too much luck. But again, we're moving into the spring as people are either adding sections or reducing sessions to maybe another opportunity.
So also to seize points, should we end up in the same situation again? I think it's important that we do have a way of measuring the success, because for whatever, for whatever reason, if we have to use even a hybrid, any type of online instruction, we need to be prepared to say whether elevate is it or not. So I, I, we can't wait until these kids go to HJ and use that. We need to have our, our, our expectation is for the Spanish class for students to leave. So I would like to see that. The other thing is, my other question is about the paraprofessional. Is this, I know one of the concerns of another that was here brought up was in terms of classroom management. So is this, do we need to support this person and provide them with any additional tools, strategies, coaching, just to make sure that he's not standing in the way?
Well, the main strategy was switching from projector to digital screen.
Okay.
That was a major rule in that classroom, and, you know, it's not, I've seen enough of those sections, it's not pandemonium by any means. And to think about middle schoolers engaging through a digital process, it actually seems pretty under control, not discounting the experience of Rashad, I absolutely believe that that's, you know, where she was living. But going to the screen- But going to the screen certainly helps. We have administrators who are visiting, helping kids, all this set up. They're all people to speak to, so we have to make sure it's a better management.
This is the seventh grader. So I think.
Actually, this is eighth graders, not in the high school course. Again, but again, that's another one. Because if we're, if we're teaching it to eighth graders, it's not in high school course anymore. It's an eighth grade course. Right, and so we just have to be very clear about what are we trying to do? And if it's to get kids into Spanish two when they get to HF, we have to start super, then eighth grader. Thank you, it's eighth graders who are not in Spanish.
So I think you should probably calendarize when the board meets to start having that discussion. Because part of the assessment is that this is not something that's offered previously. So we have no measure, we have no baseline we can measure it from. But I think it does, I think it does warrant a broader conversation about do we want to continue to do this? Do we need their value? I mean, we don't need to answer all that tonight, but if there were to be an assessment, how would you do that if it's never been offered? Well, I mean, minimally, the class itself has a spoken sequence of seven sentences. So they themselves are going to tell you, this is what we expect at Elevate to hear long students to be by the time they're here. Right, minimally. So that could probably be, that would very, that might see, you know, that whatever their exit exam is, however they do it.
I can just add also, they do have assessments that you take periodically, and they're, they're on the, so we will be able to see how students are performing across those. And then recently, we also asked our Elevate directors to be able to give us a survey that we can give to students that are here.
Oh, wow.
Sort of just, again, this is our first time trying, other than our after-school programming. But when it's all sort of wrapping up in the spring, some reflection tools to help parents gather how parents and teachers perceived the course, and how students went through, and what they felt about the interaction with the students. Perfect, exactly that.
Yeah, we can absolutely come back with the timeline. We'll let you know exactly when we can bring that data back to. But also, we'll just start the discussion, why are we stuck in Spanish? Right, so they can offer any language that we could ever hope for. So do we offer, this becomes a language course and kids are taking Spanish? Or you have some who are taking Intro French? Intro, you know, we can, so we can think about how to fit this into our larger curriculum catalog. And then I think we can press on both of those pedals at the same time. How are we measuring what we're currently doing, but also what does this look like as you move forward, whether or not we find a teacher for Spanish, or Intro Spanish or Spanish?
And just on that note, the, how, what is the, like, for example, with Bloom, you know, kids took Elevate for math, typically two kids would be talking to one, two. So what is the ratio of, of kids that are booked in? Is it, you mentioned the screen, is it?
Right, this is, so this is different than your tutoring product, because it's virtual learning. So it'd be, it's 24, 25 to one.
Oh, okay.
This is a different iteration of their services. So there, we do that same model in our after-school tutoring program, but this course is one instructor virtually with a class of students.
Is there a, again, I guess to be interested, is there a major cost difference in terms of it's double? Do you have something more like the tutoring model? Or is it something that would be?
For the Spanish course?
The Spanish course?
I would have to take a look at, that tutoring model is, the cost is per student. So it's per student to teacher ratio. So it would be a, a different cost for four students to one tutor versus six students to one tutor. I would, I would have to look into that further. If Elevate could even do the Spanish class as a sort of tutoring model.
Okay, I was just curious in terms of, again, I mean, I cannot stress this enough that the, those interactions in, in class are important. Anyway, that's my thought. So we, yeah, I'd love to.
Are there any more questions? Brokow, please. Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed. I move, that we move into executive session. Matter related, matter related to personnel, five I L 120, dash two, C1, C2, and C9. Letting negotiations continue.
Any motion, please? All of you, say aye?
Aye.
All phones, say aye. And if we will return, or how long will be?